Time of 6:00 PM, Council of City of Denton will now convene into regular session. A nice invocation will be given by -- that's great. Father God, we thank you for another opportunity to enjoy the world that you created. And Father, we pray for guidance and wisdom upon this council and with certain matters of the city. Thank you, Father, for the amazing community that we live in and citizens that we get to serve along with in Jesus' name.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to your republic, which is one nation under God, individual liberty and federal law.
It's not the -- it's not a night in the city of Denton, so we are actually going to convene into executive session first to present chapter 551 of Texas Government Code to seek advice from the city attorney pursuant to section 551.071 for a legal matter concerning confidentiality between the city attorney and the client regarding taking action upon the approval of a master development agreement with multiple parties in the Schuler Development Group. Also, the home received discussion to take action on the resolution granting the city of Denton consent for the formation of Lake Texoma Municipal Utility District Number One. We consider an ordinance creating a tax incrementary investment zone Number Two to discuss regard possible purchase exchange lease or real property pursuant to section 551.072 to hold a report, discussion, and consider taking action on accepting the form, terms, and conditions of the deed of conveying certain lands from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, authorizing the mayor to execute such acceptance on behalf of the city of Denton and authorizing the city manager to make a payment to the acquisition of such land in an amount of $1.85 million. And consider declaring forty acres out of that S.R. animal survey as surplus and directing staff to offer for sale by August fifth. Time of 6:18 PM, council now reach a meeting for the open session. This time I would advise Mr. George Schuler to the podium if you would. Will you give a few comments? Our council, I guess.
I'd like to just report to the council that we have, we think, finished very successfully some strategic partnering with you all on our project going forward. And I want to thank you on their behalf for all the work that your staff has done to get us to where we are this evening. This is not the end of the road, but it's a major milestone along the road. I'm also pleased tonight that the first mayor that we dealt with is in the audience. And he started us on this project, and we -- and I'm glad he's here tonight to see us at this point. I think this is a classic example of a public-private partnership working together. We were able to work with the federal government, the state government, the county government, and the local city government. The vast majority of the authority will rest with the city government. And then you have used your leadership and influence to create that right balance in the public-private partnership. We're excited about going forward. This is a major step, and we're glad to be here. I have to tell you also that our daughter delivered to us a grandson two months ago, and we have brought him this evening. And so he is -- I've been to hundreds of city councils and zoning meetings over all these years, and so we're starting on a civic level. Thank you.
George, have me answer any questions? Yes, council, I'm in full weight that the council are about to take action upon these items, and just want to make sure that if you feel like you and your team are comfortable with this, I know you have parts of your team all across the country, and that we're -- I know we're excited, and just want to make sure that you're ready for us to take action.
We are ready to go. We have -- the lawyers have run up enough fees that we can now, I think, get this verbal jump.
Mr. George Schuler's attorneys in the audience, I've seen Chucklin, George, so perhaps he still has some more fees for you. I'll entertain a motion from council in the matter of the master development agreement with the Schuler Development.
Mr. Johnson, I move that the development agreement presented and reviewed in executive session between the city and various landowners of interest in the Schuler Development be approved and the mayor be authorized to execute the agreement on behalf of the city.
Motion from Councilman Hanley, second from Councilman McClure, all in favor by saying aye. Both like aye. Motion carries. In the matter of accepting the deed without warranty from the United States government.
Mr. Johnson, I move that the deed without warranty from the United States of America to the city of Denton convey approximately 600 acres of land and sales price of $1.85 million, the accepted as presented, that the mayor be authorized to execute the acceptance of the deed, execute the acceptance of the deed in the substance and form presented, and the city manager be authorized to deliver to the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers the accepted deed along with the city's payment and certified funds and purchase price to the appropriate party within the USA Corps of Engineers. Further, I move that if it's complete, the city's conveyance of the property to the parties of interest in the Schuler Development Group.
Have a motion from Councilman Hanley, second from Councilman McClure, all in favor by saying aye. Both like aye. Motion carries. In the matter of authorizing the creation of one or two or more mud districts.
Mr. Johnson, I move that ordinance Number 4679 authorize the creation of two or more municipal utility districts within the city and export exterior rural jurisdiction pursuant to language that the ordinance has presented.
Have a motion from Councilman Hanley, second from Councilman Brody, all in favor by saying aye. Both like aye. In the matter of creating the tax incrementary investment zone, there will be no action taken in the matter of declaring surplus property.
Mr. Johnson, I move that forty acres in the northwest corner of the Lake Randall property be declared surplus property, that the city council instruct the city staff to proceed to bid and sell of the property at terms as impages to the city, and that all bids received following advertising and public notice be returned to the city council for consideration.
Second, have a motion from Councilman Hanley, second from Councilman Beck, all in favor by saying aye. Both like aye. Motion carries. George and team, just a few comments from the city. As you mentioned, we, with community, have been working with you for over twelve years on this development. And to get something this big done, it takes a lot of people. And you mentioned Mayor Lindsay, who I see, started this, and certainly glad that he's here. Mayor Brady, and twelve councils along the way have had the pleasure to get to work with your team. It took the United States Congress, Texas State House of Representatives, and the Grayson County Commissioners, and of course, twelve councils to get us to this day, all taking various actions throughout those years. And what the community needs to know, that the city councils those twelve years certainly did not take their responsibility. This is a big deal. This is another city within our city. And when fully developed, this development has the potential to be an additional $1.9 billion on our tax roll. Again, I want to say that because it's important to know, it's one, a potential of $1.9 billion when fully developed. To get that to happen, there's over $200 million in public infrastructure that has to be put in by the developer in order to have that return. Potential homes are over 4,000 homes, which could equate to eight to 10,000 additional people living in our fine city. And so again, the work and the effort has culminated tonight. We still have work to do, but the heavy lifting has been concluded. And again, I want to thank staff, Tom Agins and Mr. Hannah for their leadership on this. And it's just a pleasure to be a part of this, my Milldale Denton. Well, I think we have images of what that peninsula will look like, what that lakefront will look like, what that community will look like. But one thing we'll be saying, it will be called Denton, Texas. And we're excited to be a part of that. So we're going to move into the next agenda item, but again, want to thank George and his team, and certainly want to lead in a round of applause for a mine mill back. The council will, we're going to also bring one other item to the forefront of the agenda. That's going to be agenda item Number 5C, state staff report and whole discussion on a triathlon. Mr. Hannah.
Thank you, Mayor. I believe David Howden has a staff presentation on this, and there's also, we have a consultant -- no, they didn't make it tonight. They didn't make it tonight. This is an exciting project. I don't let Dave go do the heavy lifting on it because he's been most familiar with it.
But I'm not in triathlon shape. We're very excited about this, I guess about September, I think it was, whenever the budget was prepared, and we identified that we wanted to restart a triathlon event that we had hosted about a dozen years. The amount was in there for the advertising and promotion of that product. Mayor Pro Tim Hanley and I believe the D E F Chairman got together and asked for a meeting, and they met with us and staff and suggested a different product altogether, a weekend-long festival. And I included a report about that, but basically, we found three promoters in the Dallas area, and we selected one. We identified a date, a weekend for the 22nd of September. There's Friday evening activities, there's all-day Saturday activity, there's a culminating with two different races on Sunday morning, and the swimming events are in Waterloo Pool, Waterloo Lake, and Lake Texoma. And we're thinking there's going to be hundreds of participants the first year, is what we're hoping for. It's been on the streets for about a week, and the promoters said they're getting a lot of interest already. Tonight's action is just a report. Financially, we have a decision point in June. We commit our dollars for this event through about June, and then we'll make or break this festival at that time, depending on how much interest there is. But it's something that we're very excited about. We feel like there might be a net loss if the turnkey event were this year, and we will bring those dollars requested to the council. If that's the case, we're hoping to secure enough participation on staff part and other volunteers to maybe eliminate any concern over any loss of revenue. But they gave us a five-year plan, and if we was going to turn profits beginning in the second year according to their estimates, and I wish they'd been here, they're scheduled for February 4th, we will have them another opportunity later as we see the interest developing at that time. I would answer any question that you have, and then Mayor Pro Tim, and then we'll speak about his experience with this.
Questions for council. Well, I just want to say, first of all, thanks to Mayor Pro Tim and Hanley for your involvement on this. Executive session. Now, we know we've had discussions in these events in the past, but this is totally different. And rarely are we afforded the opportunity to try something new with limited risk. I mean, you're going to know the interest and be able to make a go, no-go decision. And certainly, hopefully, it will be a go, the great project that will fill our community with lots of folks for a weekend, and it'll be something different. Very good.
Mayor, I would also like to commend David and his staff, especially Shoney, all the work that they put into doing this, as well Dan McKenney from the chamber, who obviously just comes into tourism event pretty quickly with the numbers talking out. Technically, your point, Mayor, you're right, there are very few things that you can do that can have such a high impact and also low risk, and we feel like we've got a good solution. When we talked originally, it seemed like a good idea to bring in someone who this is what they do every week, week in, week out, and felt like that would put the staff at an advantage to be able to work with someone with that kind of pedigree that their business is in. So we're really excited about it, and I think that we'll have lots of interest. They are -- these types of festivals are done all over the country, and some in very remote areas, and you end up with six or seven hundred or a thousand people, you know, attending. The other thing that's great about it is it does promote some healthy living. All of these folks are very committed to their sport, and we're also interested in that, as well as the fact that it can bring some into our citizens that they'll see on a regular basis. And there will be parts of this that are projected to be very spectator-friendly, also in our downtown area, in an event similar to bike to breaks, you can, for those who have been to that. So we really like this, a great mix of different things for everybody, those who are sports enthusiasts, those who want to see something different, and also to let people see what a great area we live in and for their future.
Very good. Thanks. Questions for council? No action taken tonight, correct? Very good. We'll move back to the agenda, agenda item Number Three.
Mayor, I move that we attend the consented one.
Motion, and from Councilman Beck, second from Councilman Hanley, all in favor by saying aye. Both like aye. Motion carries. Item Number Four, public hearing, receive report on 2801 West Morton. Ms. Brody.
Mayor, council, we have a letter from Mr. Clyde. He has withdrawn his request.
Then the withdrawal, there will be no action taken. Item Number Five, A, general election May 11, 2013. Ms. Lawler.
We have a -- our national campaign is calling the election for May 11, 2013, and it's Saturday. We have two places open. Michael Beck is re-rating again, and his first term is up, as you mentioned, at large. And so we have a place open for him.
Questions for council? No, we're also ready to move. I'll second. Act with as much enthusiasm as you have. Most from Councilman McClure, second from Councilman Hanley, all in favor by saying aye. Both like aye. Motion carries. Item Number B, receive report, hold discussion on a joint election with school districts. Mr. Hannah.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to defer this to you, Ms. Lawler. This is just a different contract that we have with both school districts, Sherman and Denton, and they continue to hold their elections in May. So since it's a different contract, we will be responsible for their own to run their election. No problem.
Questions for council?
We'll defer your report.
Have a motion from Councilman Spindel, second from Councilman Malver, all in favor by saying aye. Both like aye. Motion carries. Item Five, D, sign regulations. Very good.
Mayor, council, this item was tabled in the December council meeting. The item that was a concern was the spacing of the poll signs, especially along Morton Street. We went back and did some measuring and found that most of the lots, or a lot of the lots along Morton Street were empty feet. So what we did was we went and modified the ordinance, requiring a ten-foot setback from side property lines, which did allow for basically a thirty-foot window where the sign could be located. I believe that answers the concerns the council had. There was also one other change from the ordinance that you looked at previously, and that occurred as a result of a question from a billboard contractor or billboard advertiser. Their concern, they wanted to know about electronic signs or digital signs. We went back and looked at the ordinance. The current ordinance and proposed ordinance weren't really clear about new digital signs at billboards. The ordinance clearly said that you can't take an existing billboard and convert it to a digital billboard, but it didn't say anything about putting up a brand-new billboard. So what we did was we modified the ordinance and said, you can put up a digital billboard, but you have to meet all of the requirements, set spacing, setbacks, and everything for billboard signs in that district. So basically, what that's going to do is it's going to require probably two or maybe more billboard signs to be removed to where to put up one digital billboard. So it's kind of a trade-off. Many other cities have done that, they've come back and allowed contractors to trade off so many regular billboards for a digital billboard. It would feel like this is following that. Also answers that question and clears that out. So that was the last issue that we made a change on. If you have any questions, I'll try.
I've got a few, Mr. Jackson. And I'm going to talk to this, I was concerned about the engineering studies, but I didn't see any clarification on that, is what point the trans signs require that an engineering study?
For poll signs that are more than ten feet tall, and if you look under, I believe it's under the on-premise poll sign regulation.
That's behind it. Ten feet poll type, is it from base to the top of the sign?
Yes. So anything over ten feet. The idea behind that, that's kind of a cutoff that a lot of teams use, and the reason for that is once you get up to that height, the wind pressure is higher, because there's less friction on the ground, there's less to block the wind, and so it tends to be a bit higher above the ground like that.
The other question I had about poll signs in particular, there was some worrying also about grade level measurements, like measure from grade level. I've seen it's from the base, not from -- my particular office is located on Dallas left of Morton Street. I would measure from the level of my bird, I may not be able to get above visible shot on Morton Street. So there's consideration of the road, taking into effect, and how the ordinance address that.
Typically, it's just measured from the ground below our where the pole is located, and if there's mitigating circumstances there, such as it's lower than the street or something of that nature, then we would, that would be an option for a variance. The variance requirement are, because we moved it over to the building that feels bored, they're less restricted because you don't have to prove hardship. There is four criteria that you would utilize, and as long as you meet three of those four criteria, then you would be able to get there.
And if you were, Mr. Jackson, and I apologize, I'm not really clear on visibility triangles.
That is measuring from the point of intersection of the two streets where those two born, a point, the imaginary line. You can measure back twenty-five feet on either side, and then complete triangle, nothing to be located within that area. The purpose for that is at the intersections, you want it to be open so that cars can see who's coming or moving down the street, not pull out foots on them.
So we'll have the application for my tires, not say a fault.
Basically, what it says is that if there's a poll sign that's ten feet tall, between the ground and the bottom of the sign, you're exempt from that visibility triangle. But if there's a monument sign that's put at ground level, it's going to block that area, I believe between two and nine feet, I believe is what it says. I can't remember exactly what the numbers are, then it would have to meet that visibility triangle requirement.
I have a couple more comments I just wanted to get on. All you logos, what is the reasoning behind wondering what you're going to call? I've been opposed to my rhetoric a while. And there's lots of worry in the ordinance about not putting appropriate wording on the other side of the range. Of course, all these things are near to my heart, it looks before what I do, but if I'm going to sort of on it up, or torn around office, or won't say quite good major on that banner, our ordinance would allow me to do that.
That's correct. But I think that that would be something that could be technically considered a race if somebody came back and it was a company slogan, such as like a Good neighbor for State Farm, or some other slogan like that that was normal and typical, I don't think it would be that big of a mission.
One other comment, just a few more. Jim, before we go on, so why have that in there at all? The thing is, what are we protecting?
Really, the intent of that was just to identify the space rather than, there are some places, such as a grocery store, that put up numerous things. And they'll put up groceries, pharmacy, drugs, all kinds of things, and the intent was to declutter that space so that that only just happens.
Monument signs, I think we can go to the extent of saying it need to be, not saying the chair was building, the hand made a little building going on, Morton, I would encourage them not to do the same. Some of the worrying, I guess, concerns in the government. I know this is a bit difficult to ask, we seem to put more instead of allowing some things to expand out, I guess, in a certain way. One more clarification, Robert, if you don't mind. The distance from the property line, and that's always the nine-and-a-dollar question we've got at these, so when you say fifteen feet from the property line, it's on up the curb, but actually, you have a lot property on more, fifteen feet from the road, or fifteen feet from the city's rideaway.
Well, typically, when we put the property line, we're talking about the section where the property line, or the property actually starts for your property. So if we went back to the curb line, then it may not even get outside of the rideaway, because there are some rideaways that are wider than that. But most of them usually run to a ten or twelve feet, but there are some that have more than that. So the long ending to that is we are talking about not the curb line, but where your property starts.
So my sign is legally what it is.
Right? Now I have a.
It isn't mine, it's mine. It's grandfathered in the ordinance, and that's also, I believe, that it may be text out, right? Are we curb-to-curb on Morton, the text out? Text out corporate curb?
No, no.
Little more. And so we have old signs in the media that pre-exist, as long as they're in continuous use and they meet non-conformal requirements, then they get to stay.
For example, my company Chase and Morgan, that's going to be.
Signs still safe. The signs still allowed. That's not a problem.
As long as you know the fact, the structure of the sign, you can check the material, the message on the sign, then you don't require anything else. Even if the sign's damaged in a tornado, if a certain percentage of it remains, you can put it back up. About sixty percent. But after you warn it sixty percent damage. The idea behind this, especially with the poll signs, is that we really would like to keep the damage back onto the property and not let it go through the street. If something did happen to the sign, if that was the street, if it was far enough setback from the street, it wouldn't create a problem.
The other aspect is that if you're putting a poll sign on a rideaway, we probably have water lines and sewer lines, and we really don't want to, we don't want to tend to hold for a water sewer line. If we have to dig our signs up, dig our water lines up, that sign's built, and the property ordinance has to replace it. So it's also trying to protect the property owners' dollars, but not spend it right away.
Other questions?
Mayor, I may make one comment. Some of the questions the council brought up were aesthetic issues. And sign ordinance is just that. It's an attempt to provide a well-balanced aesthetics, communities desire to have attractive community, but businesses desire to advertise their goods and services. And it's a balance that I think staff has tried to strike. I think we've done a relatively good job of taking an ordinance that is difficult to interpret, streamline that interpretation. We've worked with professional trade associations to find language in the ordinance, especially like charter builders, that they thought was reasonable and. like Chartered Builders, that they thought was reasonable and accommodating to their particular business needs. But ultimately, all in a decision on whether or not we've made that balance. So if there are things to adjust, now would be the time to talk about that. I'd rather get it right the first time than have to come back.
Sure, and I guess, certainly, a business owner would have the opportunity, if they have a certain project, to request a variance. So that's no different, right? Again, I'm looking at our old, our whole documents in comparison to new ones, there is much more clarity. Just a second, on the deal with the, we came up the first time speaking around, the deal with the vehicles and signage on vehicles, did we get that remedied or clarified as far as where a business owner, if they have their, if they're advertising it on their vehicle, where they can park their car? Did we get that clarified?
We didn't change the ordinance on that area. The intent of that was, and I think what I said last time was, such as, which were for? He parked in his parking space, or then he's parked in his parking space. There's not much parking space there to park him. However, if somebody was at Morton Street Plaza, and they were in the back part of that shopping center, and they were parking at the street with a huge sign or panel thing and saying, you know, various booths, we don't feel that that would be in compliance with the intended ordinance. They're parking there to attract the attention of people even the right-of-way. They're not parking there because that's a commuter vehicle, if they're driving back and forth to work and they're parking in front of their store, they're parking five, six hundred feet away, and in that situation, we would notify them if that's a violation of the ordinance.
Well, and I guess, man, if we're, somebody here is like, principal, maybe here is no private parking, so everybody's parking, well, I shouldn't say there's not any, there's mainly public parking, so if people are parked in front of their business there.
Let me ask the question in a different way. I've put a vinyl wrapper on my truck that says, buy City of Business and Water. And I park on my way to Walmart, I park in front of Walmart, some of the groceries are coming out, and I drive back home, and I park in my driveway, and I come to work, and I park in the city hall parking lot. None of that is a violation of the ordinance. If I go by an eighteen-lever and spray paint it and say, buy Business and Water, and I park it, you know, the five hundred block of Morton Street, let it sit there, that would be a violation of the ordinance. A good example is his lane for grouping. Everybody's seen his truck, he's got vinyl with his attractive covering, but he's got his advertising vehicle. Nothing, he's doing is violating the city ordinance. He's going about his business, he just has his truck as a form of advertising. If he decides to park that at the corner of Austin and Gandhi, and let it sit there and never move it, that would be a violation of the ordinance. Is that correct understanding, Dale?
Yeah.
Well, I have to be some concern too, like with our construction site, anytime we have a major construction site, you know, every person who's working on that site is going to pull their eighteen-lever trailer in and park that, and we have held them at the stomach of the lot.
No, that's not the intent at all. If you're at a construction site, you have a legitimate trailer there, it's permitted, it's identified by the contractor who's doing that, it's not an issue. The issue is the big panel trucks that come in and park at the corners, and they're basically using it off there to advertise the sign.
Okay.
Same thing with the old one, with the panel truck that's got balloons, even if it's parked near parking lot, it's got balloons, obviously trying to be an advertising vehicle, then that could be, that could be.
I would say, I mean, it's one thing if somebody's forty, birthday, and somebody ties some lines on it. It's difficult sometimes to nail down an ordinance to the exact regulation, and it's going to require some consideration and interpretation and confidence. And hopefully, we're going to use that. If we don't, then we know that you'll be calling and saying, what's wrong with these people, why are they being unreasonable and how they enforce this?
Your very most, thank you, Dan.
Awesome, Dan Brute.
Have a motion from Council of Raleigh, second from Council of Maryland, all in favor, I say aye.
Aye.
Both like aye.
Aye.
Let's go one aye, motion carries. Item number five E, Renaissance Park Drainage. They just keep surprising me every time I look around. That's not Mr. Howard.
Mr. Speaker. I was delegated, the question, the question to the governor right there. Mayor and Council members, October first, there was a group of homeowners from Renaissance Park subdivision here, talking about a condition on the north side of subdivision that has occurred over time and eroded some of the yards. Staff was instructed to examine the area and draw up a description, a little bit of history on the project. The map shown on the area is the Coffin Street Park intersection, due east of Coffin Street is the drainage area along that creek line channel in there. That's the project, as you all recall that. That completes, the close-up of that, the drainage ditch is identified in blue. It is back of the ten lots on the north side of that subdivision. The major damage to that project was done on lots four and five as a result of some water coming in from the subdivision to the north, and it gets through erosion as the creek progresses back to the southeast. The first, that we entered into a contract with George Cowan. George was the civil engineer that did the design on the three options that we'll talk about tonight. Option number one was the base bid. The base bid was to install gabion baskets along the backside of lots four and five. And for those that aren't familiar with gabions, they've been around, tech side has used them for years. This is the, a picture of the map. This will be what is on the flow line of the creek. There'll be a nine-inch map there, as wide as that creek is, filled with nine-inch or smaller rocks to keep the erosion down to a minimum. On top of that map, then we're going to have baskets that are going to be placed, they're three-foot square and in various lengths along the channel. They'll be two baskets high, and they'll be staggered in at the top. They'll again be filled with rock, and that will prevent any further erosion along that creek line. The second bid, the next picture is a picture of a typical basket, once it's filled and ready, it won't be set into place. The first alternate bid that we talked about was the installation of sixty-inch and seventy-two-inch concrete pipe along the back of all ten lots. This project will tie into the existing culvert under Park. It'll run due east, there'll be a junction box established at that point, and then from there, seventy-two-inch pipe will go the entire length of the rest of the subdivision. We'll have the thirty-inch pipe coming in from the north tie into the junction box at the point indicated there on the plan. There'll be another small eighteen-inch pipe coming from Renaissance Park that will tie into that seventy-two-inch down around lots, inch lots seven. And then at the end of that seventy-two-inch pipe, there'll be a standard type D headwall on the end of that. The second alternate is to pipe just the area behind lots four and five to tie in the thirty-inch pipe coming from the subdivision to the north, and then seventy-two-inch headwall on the, on the end of that pipe there. We opened bids on October the fifth, the base bid, which is the gabion baskets. The low bid on that was under fifty-three thousand, five hundred and twelve dollars and nine cents. The alternate number one, which is to pipe the whole subdivision, the low bid was three-hundred and eighty-three thousand, five dollars and five cents. And the second alternate was to pipe just behind lot four and five. The low bid on that was under twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three dollars and twenty cents. We're also going to ask for authorization to pay the engineer six thousand dollars for the work that he did designing the three alternates, once one of those options is selected by the council. If you have any questions, we'll try to answer those.
Mr. Speaker, as part of this project, because I actually went out and looked at this when we did this back in October, it's, are we doing anything with the homeowner that on the north side of that property that has created a extremely high-pressure water coming out into the, into that creek? Or are we?
It would pay the which alternate? The base bid, the gabion baskets, will end at lot five, as does the pipe. The only thing that will address anybody downstream would.
No, this is on the north side of the, so on the creek?
The it's a structure.
This is, yeah, so on the downfall. Yeah, the downfall, where all the problem was created from one side.
All three options will correct that.
Okay, good.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Tom, or David, if you want.
Kind of regash for me between the base and the, and the alternative, and the alternate scheme. Can we talk a little about, something about grid and high velocity? Are we patching it again by dealing with the lowest grid, I guess is my question?
No, sir, no, it wouldn't be. I think by the time that goes from sixty-two inches to the junction box to seventy-two inches, a lot of that energy is going to be dissipated downstream. It probably won't be affected any more than what it is right now. There's no damage done down there. All the damage is confined to those two lines. So that's why staff recommendation is just going to be to address those two lines.
If I could comment, the damage that may be there downstream is consistent with the damage you would find in a drainage channel. People have made improvements within that drainage channel, and erosion has taken place, but it is a drainage channel.
Well, and I guess, that's not my only insight, maybe with the adjacent corners that were developed, where you're putting in more water, not just.
That's the negative of the design, the runoff factor, if everything was developed in the drainage area, that is why their bonus is sixty-inch and seventy-two-inch pipe.
And I love how you can say with money on this, but I just, you know, we lived out this conversation, did your dying, but if you.
The base bid was only the baskets and no pipe? Correct. Whereas alternates number two had pipe? Correct.
Just not as much.
Yeah.
Just not as far as.
Just behind, forward high.
Other questions? Clarification, all three solutions will meet the minimum requirements for what we're trying to accomplish.
Yes, sir.
Is there a point where the water volume becomes to the level that it would save the capabilities of all?
No. No, the design, the engineers, the calculations that he did for runoff, future runoff, all that was taken into consideration. And the funds for this can be coming from the, will come through the water bond, the water bond, the most healthy fund. David, did I miss?
We talked about street funds.
Street funds, street funds, I'm sorry. But I, I mean, we did correct myself here. You can use any bond or fund source you want to on this project. Use whatever public funds we have available to use. I wouldn't use a street bond, because we have a limited number of those revenues. We have more water fund bonds available than the street bond fund, so if council's looking for hundred dollars, I think the water bond funds are probably, it's a healthier, it's a healthier account right now.
My concern with taking water underground at any point is the threat of drowning a hospital, a kid or an adult. And my personal experience with the gabion baskets is the one I'd be.
I want to comment here, I truly hope, Mr. Howard, if you got a comment. Money's not a factor. David, which one's the best one?
I certainly agree with Mr. Hannah, if it's suitable or appropriate to use the water bonds, and I agree.
No, I'm sorry, which design? Which design, money's not a factor, which design is the best?
I think the RCP pipe is the best design, and I certainly understand the Council of Raleigh's point that long-term solution, RCP pipe solution is probably best.
Or you can count.
Make the motion that we accept offer number two for invested construction using the water bond, or water bond funds. Have the motion of Councilman Beck, second from Councilman Hanley, all in favor, I say aye. Both like aye.
Aye.
And that included the hanging here?
Okay.
I think we have the direction, intend, and our staff's intention.
For clarification, Councilman Raleigh, were you aye? One aye, motion carries. Item number five F, NTR water towers, Mr. Hagan.
Excuse me. How about that rich? Yes, I did, yes, I did. And I'm sorry to be called off guard.
And your city clerk.
Yeah, but for the fact that I'm a lawyer, I'd be embarrassed. In years, you have leased your facilities, your elevated facility for cell phone usage, and we have not had a request previously for the leasing space on your water towers for wireless network. There has been wireless equipment on some of the city's facilities in the past, that belonged to others, but that was kind of a exchange of services arrangement. This, that is before you're not, this first lease application that you have from a private entity resiring to lease space on both the Air Force Water Tower and the, is it Parkdale? Thank you very much. Tower. We don't have a good feel for what the fair market value of that place is because the business dynamics is different for the wireless network business model than it is with cellular model. After collaboration among the staff, there's a recommendation that you consider the monthly rental for both towers to be at five hundred dollars per month. There was a picture in the agenda that shows the type of equipment that would be hoped to own the two towers. And one of the things that, that we, I guess precautionary words the staff had to offer was that all of these towers have a finite amount of space. And there's no doubt that in days or who knows what tomorrow holds, that the cellular array of antennas is more possible to sit, is worth more in the marketplace. So just be aware that every time you authorize an array of antennas, that you're taking away precious space on those towers. With that being said, just wanted you to be aware of that, the staff recommendation is that you favorably consider the application of technical communications to place their equipment on our towers at a rate of five hundred dollars per month. And during this process, was in regular communication with the power to make sure that what was being considered or requested, we're not interfering with the primary use of the tower, and that is for your water supply. And we believe that we can accommodate for. One of the things that wanted to call your attention is a small item, but it is important is that we will be requiring, as we do on cellular customers, that this user provides their own electric meter. A prior user was not required to do that in the wireless setting, when we had a partnership with Internet technology, but in this case, they will be providing their own electricity. That's not a big item, but it does make them stand a lot. That's not a big item, but it does make them stand alone.
Question. I recall when starting from '08, from council, we had, I think, one or two times, what was the fee that the other cellular companies are paying to us to use our water?
Wherever it was worth, from sixteen to eighteen hundred dollars a month. We've got, maybe we've got three different contracts. And we have facilities on every tower, I believe, unless... Is there still a user on the Tull Avenue structure?
Not in the area.
Do you think they may have left? Is that a substantial amount more, amount of equipment, is that a lot more of a duty?
They would call you before you'd be long.
Just more money in cellular array now. And they do require more land space around the tower.
Another question. It's all the motion.
Make a motion for the board.
The motion from Councilman Hanley, second to Councilman Beck, all in favor of I say aye.
Aye.
Vote like aye. Motion carries. Item number five G, enclosure waterloo pool, Mr. Howard.
Mayor and council, this is a request for council's authorization of a design contract with Wright Associates to design a climate control multi-use facility within the waterloo pool. Whenever the pool fee started, some fourteen, fifteen months ago, staff was encouraged to find a vision, look for opportunities to do more with the pool. We certainly are thankful for all the support that the pool has received. The increased use of the pool, the revenues, they continue to decline. And much of that credit goes to our staff that's managing the pool and the maintenance manager there as well. Tonight's activity is just the design contract. We've included some elevations and just some planned views to kind of give you an idea. This was previously presented to the council and was prudent management for us to save for a year before we started budgeting these funds. And we're certainly hopeful that we can do something, maybe with staff's participation, to keep this part of this particular facility closer to a hundred thousand dollars. For dining and viewing is the main room, plus a concession room and a break room for lifeguards, which for everybody that's been at the pool, we have very, very limited indoor space for the number of employees that we have there. The other thing that we're hoping to have is some offices upstairs so that the people that are doing the work can see everything that's going on. Because basically, there are a modified storage building and parking lot almost where it's located. We're recommending that you support the, or authorize the contract for another twelve thousand dollars.
Questions from council?
So this is one clarification. The part that we're authorizing tonight, just the design part, was that, I guess, we'll come back to council once the design is then flushed out, or?
We would request authorization to go out for bids, and we were bringing the bids back to council.
Okay, so...
The council would have to approve any building project before we...
Right, yeah.
So this would eliminate the, that back corner building that we, the back there? Was that the part that we had to break in at one time? Was that the part that was broken into?
No, it was actually the front office. Or either councilman got this in to build a community or recycling. That would be a similar viewing to that facility that...
Would any of this, the ability to have at the same time address some of the openings, you know, having difficulty closing and opening that opening top? Is there any way to have that part of this study, to look at something to modify it at the same time? Because in the winter of the summer, it always becomes, it gets a little more of a rain, or springtime involved.
That really goes back to the original design of the opening mechanisms. They're really just glorified RV canopy opening devices. They were not designed for the weight of those doors and the function. And when the enclosure was re-skinned a couple of years ago, we looked at that in great detail with the contractor, and he agreed. Credit to Mitchell Enterprises, they assist us with the opening and closing of that. But the original design for that was inadequate at best. And we, they come and help us close and open that, whatever request we make.
Councilback is not shared too. And when it was originally built, it actually did function, but it warped over a very short amount of time. And for whatever reason, the city was not, at that time...
Well, to me, I was questioning that it wouldn't spend that amount of money in that area to have it cool. And why don't we, at the same time, see if we can get this area addressed and also open and closing the back there? And see where it winds up being cold and getting hot at night, per day, and do that at the same time.
You know, I think the primary, my kids, it's kind of very involving with the pool. And I think it's really from the spectators and from the office workers. The ones that are swarming here are very comfortable, as long as it's not too cold. I assume we're opening and closing those at seasonal, as opposed to daily, which is something not what you would hope. We hope you push a button and open and close depending on maybe weather. But I think actually just providing a location that this is building, we saw from full spectators and it has largely improved in the pool and activity there from what I've seen. I appreciate the way that's handled, so I'm all for this.
Would it be a very big cost or a big difference for them to be able to, that company that would do that, still inclined to look at that and just go and see what they could... Would it cost more money than twelve thousand dollars to access a tattoo to come back and give us a recommendation? Alternatives to that?
I think that the...
It's a whole different kind of company.
I think you'd have to redesign employee system in order to have a functional system where you could hit a button and it has to work. And you're going to have to replace the mechanical components involved in doing that. You may, because the tiles of the nature are poly... They're... Polycarbonate? Yeah, polycarbonate tile. They're going to expand and contract and buckle with the heat, and that's part of the problem. Michael, when they open those up, they get on them with hammers and beat the heck out of them.
I guess I'm trying to, we don't know what that number is. I'd like to know what that number is. Thirty thousand dollars to sort of picture to make it correct, to make it right?
We can certainly get that number for you, that is our problem. We would like to look at that possibly as a future maintenance contract, but the fellow that provided the design for the enclosure originally brought that design with him. And we have not had a real chance with him to look at this as yet. We've continued to function with it the way it is. We are very, I guess, familiar with just the main changes in the season and probably don't need to open it all that regularly anyway. But the heat of the building for that large of a structure really costs a lot of movement. And so it impacts how well those... We'd like to give a hand gift to Betty Regis, who's here tonight, who's been doing a fine job. She and her staff.
Mayor, how many motions approved the twelve thousand dollar design date?
The motion, Councilman Hanley, second to Councilman Rowley, all in favor of I say aye.
Aye.
Vote like aye. Motion carries. Item number five H, review the subdivision regulations.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the conclusion of a saga started over a year ago. We adopted an ordinance, unvetted and undiscussed with our development community in an effort to make sure we had adequate projections on books and time to deal with large developments that may or may not come to the city. And we did that with the promise that we'd go back and then meet the development community. And we did that, we did several meetings with the development community. And we listened to what they had to say, and we argued with them sometimes, and we listened with them sometimes. But what you have before you reflects the outcome of that last discussion we had. And we went through almost a page of, I remember correctly, with several engineers and civil developers. And not everything that they wanted in here is in here. But we listened seriously to their comments. And where we saw the ability to make changes, we did. Where we thought what we had written originally protected the interest of the community in the long term, we kept those. This, I think this is a very well-done subdivision. I'm sure you'll find people that feel difficult about it. But again, that's a church of regulation. You've got to find that balance. I believe we found that balance. This is the third subdivision I've been involved in drafted. And I think this is by far one of the most balanced subdivisions that I've seen. So the staff recommended, the council adopted. We have the freedom to change some of our technical specifications from time to time because we reference them, we don't make them part of the ordinance or just reference the document. But in theory, it should allow us to have some, an easier process in changing the technical requirements. As technology changes, as our community standards change, we have some freedom to do that and to have an easier adoption process. David, do you have any thoughts you'd like to add to the process?
No, I just know that we, as you said, I can't count the number of hours that four of us have been on this. And the page, the pages, the whole way to describe things we've done. We appreciate the input, but the main thing we should, I think, is just quality. And I feel like certainly want to recommend, as you do, that where we are right now.
There is, there are some elements, I will be admitted, but I don't draw counsel's attention to this, that we spent a large part of discussion on the last time it was before you. That is the public park dedication department. I believe it's page ninety-two, ninety-seven. And council's concern was that it does not be required for the developer that might build, you know, ten acre, or a ten year subdivision, which is predominantly how this has grown. And so we put an exception requirement that unless you're building fifty units or more, you may have to meet the nice parkland dedication requirements. Trying to strike that balance. Again, parkland dedication, the parkland dedication part of the subdivision ordinance are an important part of the amenities that will be required at the sugar development. And I think it's important to have something like that. And you will find that a number of communities, not all, but a number of communities have parkland dedication requirements in their subdivision ordinance. And it goes back to council's firm, it creates a little bit of community attraction, retention, and family. But that is something that the council did have a discussion on, I'm going to admit, but I didn't mention that was included, but we had some changes to it that hopefully reflect council's direction.
Questions, Mayor?
I'd like to motion that we approve the...
An emotion from Councilman Flur, second to Councilman Mallory, all in favor of I say aye.
Aye.
Vote like aye. Motion carries. Council now reconvenes to executive session to take on, or sit at the chapter five five, we want to text government to deliberate on the item negotiation, since the five five one dot zero eight six related to multifamily development.